This is a regular meeting of the Board of Managers of the Marlin Independent School District. Being held November the sixteenth, twenty twenty, beginning at five P M in the middle school library six seventy eight to six. A recording of the meeting will be available for listening on the district website. The subject to discuss or considered upon which any form or action may be taken or listed below. Items do not have to be taken in the same order as shown on this meeting notice. Unless removed from the considered item within consent agenda will be acted on at one time. Please roll call. Board Manager Terry.
President.
Board Manager Vickers is not here at the time. Board Manager Johnson. Two of us present one absent, so we still have a core. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment aside. Other comment? Recognition, November twenty twenty, employee of the month. November twenty twenty, Lone Star Governance Student of the Month. November twenty twenty, Lone Star Governance Employee of the Month. Turn it over to. Doctor Henson, you got it.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board President Johnson, Board Managers Terry, Doctor Henson. We'd like to introduce to you all the November Lone Star Governance Employee of the Month, Mr. Robert Charles. Mr. Charles has been with the Marlin Independent School District for twenty years. He started at Brown and moved his way up to Magnus. He's born in Marlin. He's the class of nineteen seventy six. His wife Nancy Charlton is from Otto, Texas. He's been married for forty one years and he appreciates his time home with his wife. He belongs to the Saint John, Saint John United Church of Christ. Ms. Mary Charlton, his mother still lives in Marlin as well. And the one thing he would like to say about himself is that he loves his job. Congratulations, Mr. Charles, thank you so much, Mr. Charles.
Probably from my first day in Marlin, I mean, Robert was one of the first employees that I met. His spirit, his love, his passion has not changed, not one second for one day. So, Robert, we just all love you, we all appreciate you, sir. Congratulations.
Our next, our Lone Star Governance Student of the Month.
One.
Zariah Cleveland, a junior at Marlin High School. She participates in cheer and she's a parliamentarian of the National Honors Society. She's also a member of CIS and the Secretary of Class for twenty twenty two. She was asked if she liked being a student at Marlin and she said she loves being a student at Marlin. Being, before commencing, not only does she like being a student, she loves being a Marlin Bulldog all the way around. Being a student has a great opportunity for her every day, just run by people who care and want the best for her. Teachers who help her, help her with her test and also help her with critical thinking. The administrators encourage her and achieve her, make, help her achieve her goals, get the best out of life. She's always encouraged to overcome obstacles that seem to threaten and pull her back. She always has constant support from family, friends and teachers. Is this your favorite group going away? Oh, okay. She loves being a Marlin student no matter the adversity she faces. She always overcomes them and proud of when dollars get her wrong. Zariah is everything, Zariah is everything good about Marlin High School. Pass her off, shows a great attitude, infectious personality, affects all their company contact partner. Zariah will continue to grow as a MHS student and will achieve great things this time of coaching. Her name is not for me, I'll pause that. Thank you so much, congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you, Summer.
And our Lone Star Teacher of the Month, Ms. Tamika Suma. She successfully completed two undergraduate degrees in Promotion and Kinesiology from the University of Texas at El Paso, UTEP. And currently pursuing a master's at Lamar University of N B A in Healthcare Administration. Coach Suma learned four, led her four years in soccer at UTEP. She currently holds a second all-time score accolade since two thousand and nine. She is a resourceful individual with passion for bringing fresh new energy to the workplace, academic setting and everyday life. From her managerial experience, strives to showcase strong technical leadership, multitasking, communication skills, as well as basic understanding of medical terminology and practices. In her most recent role, she's a Marlin High School Chemistry Teacher. And teaching I P C A chemistry has, as well as the head soccer boys and girls coach, helping to mold the young minds of tomorrow. Coach Suma is a go-getter, she meets every challenge head-on, rather than complaining about the problems, she seeks solution. Our scholars at Marlin High School are blessed to have a wonderful educator such as Coach Suma. Our scholars will be better because of her leadership and passion for kids.
We'd like to thank you to everyone of y'all for doing what you're doing for Marlin High School.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
At this time, five oh seven, we're going into closed session. Approved to Texas Government Code Section five five one point oh seven four. Deliveration of personal matter. Fifty-six. Ladies and gentlemen, record.
Warf President Johnson, Warf Member Terry will begin the superintendent's report with our Lone Star Governance Goal Progress Measure Report for two point one and two point two. Presented by Dr. Stacy Parker.
Good evening, Board President Johnson. Board Managers, Doctor Henson. So tonight, I'm going to present to you our Lone Star Governance Goal Progress Measure Reports for Lone Star Governance Indicators two point one, two point two. So for Lone Star Governance Goal two point one, that goal states that percentage of our third through eighth grade students failing reading per quarter will decrease from eight percent to four percent by the end of each year or one percent each quarter as measured by our report card grades. So in elementary, for grades three through fifth, no students fail reading in the first two six weeks. And the current failing rate per report card grade data right now is zero percent. So we see a link on the chart, we actually for the first candidate that we've referred for fifth grade, we had a one percent passing rate in the reading classes. In middle school, grades six through eight, two eighth grade students fail reading in the second six weeks alone. So the current failing rate per report card grade data for sixth and seventh grade is zero percent, but three percent for eighth grade. And I just want to make note that although we're looking at the indicators for our grades three through eighth grade, our greatest concern at the district level is with our failing rates in high school. So for right now, according to the Lone Star Goal, we are meeting in terms of those grade areas, but we have other measures in place for our high school students. So overall, there are three hundred ninety-two students in grades three through eight. And so of those grade levels, we have only two students have failed reading per the report card data. And so the total district percentage, as we're measuring it against our goal, failing rate is zero point five percent. So I just want to remember that we are currently below the one percent goal in the first quarter. And looking at our Lone Star Goal, Governance Goal two point two, that current goal states that the third through eighth graders whose reading Lexile levels meets or exceeds expectation is an increase from thirty-eight percent of pass rate to fifty-four percent by twenty twenty-one, or an increase by four percent each year as measured by a computer-based reading assessment program. So as indicated earlier, this year we are utilizing the N W B A's map universal screener as our measure for this. I also want to call your attention to the scale that I utilize in measuring the data. It is the standard Lexile chart per grade level. So it just indicates the ranges that would indicate on, on grade level, proficient and above grade level. So as I look at our map data, I'm measuring against that chart. So as it stands, the students reading on or above Lexile level were calculated again based on a universal screener. So looking at elementary school, for our third graders, thirteen of the three students tested on the screener were performing on or above proficiency level for our Lexile reading levels. For fourth grade, sixteen out of forty-seven students. And for fifth grade, twelve out of the fifty students. So we look at that chart and give us a percentage of twenty-four point five percent for third grade, thirty-four percent for fourth grade, twenty-four percent for fifth grade. So those that are low for fifty-four percent, we still fall short of that goal for our elementary grades. In middle school, of our sixth grade students, eight out of thirty-six were on or above Lexile reading levels, twenty-one out of fifty-two seventh graders and twenty-eight out of forty-two eighth graders. So again, indicating where they fall in the percentile range, twenty-two percent of our sixth graders are reading on or above grade, that are indicated by the Lexile ranges. Forty point four percent of our seventh graders, sixty-seven percent of our eighth graders. So as it stands, our eighth graders are reading above our index of fifty-four percent, but our two to three graders are falling a little short.
You said eight of our, eight out of thirty-six is reading on.
On or above grade level, yes, sir.
What was, what was this, twenty-two?
Twenty-two percent. So we look at all of the grade levels as a whole as our indicators measure, our percentile rank for the students combined, third through eighth grade, on or above Lexile reading level is currently at thirty-five point three percent. And so that's equivalent to ninety-eight out of the two hundred eighty students testing third through eighth grade. So if you see as a whole for the district, we fall a little short of the fifty-four percent.
So we are thirty-five point three?
Yes, sir.
So thirty-five percent of our students read on grade level, third through eighth grade combined, whenever we set a district goal of fifty-four percent. So basically, two-thirds are not on grade level, and one-third is on.
But they're not, but they're not failing reading?
But they're not failing.
Correct.
So.
So when they're failing, it's when we've tested?
Correct, so, and that's actually a very, very good question. We've made sure that the, the curriculum and what they receive every single day is still trying to meet them where they are to give them what they need. Clearly, we see that they have issues and struggle with reading, whenever two out of three students is not reading on grade level. In order to not have them highly frustrated and highly frankly not being successful in the learning, we have to make sure that we're giving them opportunities to be successful and just try to find the activities that are still on grade level, but it's going to meet you on your reading level. It's kind of just the nature of the beast here in Marlin.
Which is true, Ben, as you, because I thought that that's a great question to ask and just exactly indicated. We are working to show that growth also, because we do have that growth indicator. And so right now, they are working at the level where the kids are. So we hope to report growth in these areas. Hope we're going to try to get above that or above our fifty-four percent, most definitely, when we definitely want to show where we trend upwards.
Good question, Mr. Johnson.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Warf President Johnson, Warf Mrs. Terry. I'm wanting to provide a review of board policy E L A local as it relates to district charter partnerships. So what is a district charter partnership? In two thousand seventeen, the technical legislature did release or did approve Senate Bill eighteen eighty-two as it speaks about district in-house charter partnerships. So what does it mean to authorize a charter in the district? Marlin I S D will enter into a performance contract with an operating partner to really work on supporting the needs of Marlin Elementary School. The operating partner has autonomy in all aspects over the campus, operations, personnel, finance. However, the district, we still hold the partner accountable for reaching the goals that we set forth for the operating partner. So how do we balance autonomy and accountability between the district and the operating partner? So we'll have E L A local, which we have discussed. That will really kind of break down the authority and the rules of how it looks working with that partner. There will be a rigorous application process. Then on our end, we're going to have to make sure that we set goals that are ambitious and that we hold partner accountable to those goals. And all that will be outlined in policy of E L A local. So a couple reasons of why districts do authorize charters, of course, we know is to expand diversity of programs. In Marlin's case, to support the very needs of our primary elementary school. And ultimately, it's just to get that sustainable lasting change which our students need and a level of expertise from an operating partner. So when you look at who is eligible to be an operating partner, you have a current charter school, a nonprofit higher education or government. And Marlin I S D, I would like for us to consider an institution of higher education. And then whenever you look at the types of partnerships, moving the first one, a turnaround partnership, because it's a contractual contract with the partner to turn around an F-rated campus and forever says Marlin Elementary School. So benefits, there are two main benefits. There is a financial benefit to potentially receive additional funding for Marlin Elementary School for the per pupil enrollment. And then accountability benefit is, of course, if approved by T E A. We could be eligible for a two-year kind of good sanction as it relates to Marlin Elementary School. Then we get exempt for preparing the turnaround plans for a campus motion. So a little bit of our policy, which we will have to, of course, revise and bring back to our district board meeting. But I did want to highlight the importance of oversight and evaluation that this board will still have in working with the actual partner. We're able to set forth the goals, the performance standards, but we're also able to make decisions as it relates to renewing, taking weather charter probation and intervening on the actual operating partner. And then, of course, the board will evaluate. So we set forth the goals, we're looking into them, the board will evaluate how the operating partner is doing and all this is lined out in the actual policy. And then the board will communicate the results of the evaluation to our community, just letting them know how we're doing. And I did want to mention that last piece, revocation. If operating partners underneath the standards of the school district and of the board and the community, ultimately, we can revoke. Are there any?
Good evening, again, Warf President Johnson. Superintendent Henson brings you the October financial report. As you can see from our October, we have made the adjustments that we discussed last month, that we had some miscalculations, some errors that we needed to correct. So October is looking a lot better. As you can see, we are starting to bring in those state payments that we have from T E A. But I wanted to make sure that I point out to you all that as we move into the end of the year, November, December, to the second quarter of our fiscal year, November, December, January, that those state payments will continue to go down. Actually, they will go down to zero as we start to collect tax revenue from the captain and from the city. So those numbers will start to flop, hopefully everyone pays their taxes this year. We have a good return rate and we'll be able to continue to sustain as a school district. So I just want to make sure that you are aware of that, for the next three months, it's already until about February. Again, we have a traditional expenditure, expenditure that you can see we brought down in the month of October. Typically, September is a little higher as we start school with school supplies and we're getting things ready to get off the ground during that September, October, you'll start to see this trend happen as we go throughout the school year. But from my projections and from my calculations, we are right on track to move into our second quarter of the fiscal year, which would be November, December and January. But October, November, December, I apologize about that. So October will be our first month of the second quarter. Are there any questions about financial report? Next, we have our food service again, as you can see, we move into that second quarter, we're starting to, what we call drawdown funds from our national school lunch program and we're starting to get those reimbursements as we start to serve students and as we start to make sure, and we have a full service, less COVID students that are eating in our cafeteria and we're making sure that we're getting reimbursed by expenses, cafeteria workers, food and commodities and things like that to make sure all of our students have a hot meal. As we go throughout the year, we're continuing to see this regularly as we draw out funds from this program. And finally, in this part, we have our financial report about our investments. The top part is about our tech pool and with our one to four, eight thousand eighty-one cents in interest earnings that we've earned this month. And then we have our traditional local maintenance account with our ending, beginning balance from what you saw last financial report to now our current ending balance, what we have in our account that we present to you monthly. Are there any questions, anyone about the financial report? Next, we have the October check registry on the screen, you will only see a snippet of the check registry. You have a full artifact in your board book that you're able to examine everything from our check registry. One thing I would like to point out, you may notice towards the bottom of your check registry or within sequence, you will start to see an E in this first column, that's our vendors who are starting to take advantage of our A C H payments that we're doing. So we're no, we're able to pay less for checks and we're able to start doing direct deposit for our vendors. So hopefully, that's a cost savings that we're able to measure in the long run for the district. Any other questions?
And you had good response on that, huh? I was just surprised, I don't know why.
Yeah, you would not believe how many don't want to go, but we've been definitely encouraging them to get their A C H payments. And I think the word has gotten out now with a lot of vendors that we do that and they tend to flock to companies that do A C H payments. A lot of school districts have not converted over to A C H for their vendors to attract that type of business.
Well, I'm proud y'all are doing that, that's great.
Next, we also have our annual financial report. So around this time of the year, we have the financial audit to present to you all. However, due to some COVID-related issues, the actual auditors are asking us to apply for a waiver that is available through T E A. And T E A is aware of this, many school districts are going through this process, to be able to submit a waiver to have an extension, to submit to your financial report. So with T E A, we'll give the auditors a couple of extra days, a timeframe, and audits are still presented to you in a timely manner to make sure that it is done with due diligence and we have accurate information. So I had to bring to the board today with the permission of Doctor Henson and also give permission from the board to submit this waiver on behalf of Marlin Independent School District. So this is a possible addition part of the consent agenda. Any questions about that waiver? And last, but not least, the Target Improvement Plan to my elementary and middle school campuses on October the fifth, I presented to you all the actual Target Improvement Plans that you all presented with the Campus Intervention Plans by the principals at our board meeting. So part of that has been updated to our Target Improvement Plans to reflect some of the strategies and techniques that the campuses are going to utilize. With the Target Improvement Plan, because of our current status academically, we have to submit that plan to T E A and it is due in the month of December. We have posted for thirty days in order for public comment before we can actually submit it and have an official record of us submitting a plan. So it's the same plan that we presented to you on October the fifth. We publicly posted for public comment that have not been any public comments recorded. So we're ready to submit this document to T E A for their review and for them to provide us feedback and the support that we need. So we need more improvement today to go ahead and submit that by the deadline. Are there any questions?
And that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
I, I move that the October twenty twenty financial report is approved as presented. Don't we need to do that?
So you can improve.
I mean. No, I don't need to do line by line. Okay. Because this is just one item of the, thank you, I thought, whoa.
Okay, so then, for them to have to do then, for that, you'll have, if you want to get at the package, you'll go A through D and we'll take no action on T. You can take no action on T, I can't tell you what to do.
What page am I, do need to be, that I can talk about this?
So.
I'm on.
So, I mean, I will start reading this right here and then I will say consent, consent agenda, A, A through D.
Thank you. Okay. Move that the Board of Managers approve the request to submit an annual financial, well, that's just, that's another one of the, I'm on the wrong page. I don't want to do that again. Oh, Danny's not here to be correcting me, thank goodness. That's our consent speaking, I got to get a little farther back there.
Well, actually, we don't, we don't have that verbiage to say the A through D.
Okay.
Yeah, how do you say the first part of? So I will stop right here and I'll say, here, I say.
Consent items.
There you go.
Okay. I move that the Board of Managers approve consent items A through D. Mr. President?
My second.
Okay.
End of the discussion, and what we're going to do on D?
So, so let's, so let's vote right now on A through D.
A through D.
Most advanced two O's.
And then we take no action on E.
No action, why?
Because Mrs. Terry can't vote for herself.
Oh.
And then Mr. Vickers and yourself, he's not here, so it would be a form to vote, to come vote on. Thank you, Lynette, for that.
Thank you. What about, was the deadline to submit this, is, will it pass before we meet again?
They, they were asking for the main school to validate, but if we're meeting on the seventh, I'm going to call it tomorrow and see if that's going to be a problem, if we improve it on the seventh.
Tell that that Warf President Johnson approves it, you know.
And if they say that it's too late, I mean, I've served my time, but I'm, I'm willing to serve again. And if they say that it's too late, I mean, I've served my time, but I'm, I'm willing to serve again.
So, then we can either formally announce that we'll take no action on ten E, or you skip over to item number eleven. We'll have to, Lynette's going to call tomorrow. So, Lynette's going to call tomorrow to see if they need for us to actually vote on it and approve it. If so, we'll bring it back on December the seventh. If not, we're hoping that it can at least have Mrs. Terry's name there for now, and then we'll take formal action in December, and then, I guess, admit the board minutes at that time to them, but right now, we're not able to vote on it right now.
There'll be no action on Consent Agenda Item E. Is there any other thing? If not, extend the term.